To order Thursday, July 13th, 2017, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, Santa Barbara City College. The roll call will show that all of our trustees are present except Veronica Gallardo, who is still on vacation, but we think having a wonderful time.[61.28][61.28](Laughter). And Anthony is back from his vacation.
Yes.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Welcome to the audience as well. This is a good-sized summer audience. We have our faithful group of mighty people and a few extra people that aren't always here, I think. Our next item is recognitions. We don't have any this time.
No recognitions.
And so we go to minutes of the meeting of June 8th, 2017. Can I have a motion to approve? Peter?
Approval.
Second.
Marty, second. Any comments, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, minutes pass. Public comment, anybody, Angie? No one. That takes us right to the report from the Academic Senate. And by the way, we only have one meeting this month, and so we're treating this one as more similar, more like our regular business-heavy meeting. So that's why we have these reports and so forth. Priscilla, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I don't know why I feel unusually happy to be here.[147.51][147.51](Laughter). I just wanted to share that with you.[150.12][150.12](Laughter).
That's good. Yes, do we.[153.12][153.12](Laughter).
We were hoping you were always happy to be here.
I'm always, I'm saying unusually happy, so...
Maybe it's because you don't have to come back later in the month.[164.22][164.22](Laughter). There's that.
Yeah, so the Academic Senate met yesterday for our midsummer meeting, and we had a long agenda, because there's so much to catch up on. I wanted to talk about just three parts, though. Of course, we're all thinking about the transition that we're going through right now with the loss of a number of our faculty and staff, and some of those require some adjustments on our parts and what we do. So as one example, we discussed online student surveys, which are the student evaluations of instructors in classes. And the Office of Institutional Research Assessment and Planning had brought forward a proposal to shift from what is currently a predominantly paper-based process, where the surveys are distributed in the classes, to an online process where students get a very short URL and log in on their phones mostly, unless they have a laptop or something else with them, and do the survey online. So that will aid in saving a lot of human hours in processing, because previously those surveys, thousands and thousands of them, were fed manually, one by one, by hand, into the reader. So we talked about, in moving to the system, which will begin in fall 2017, how can we make sure that we're still conducting the surveys in a way that works for the students and the faculty member who is conducting the survey? So that was one of our discussion topics, and we're going to continue talking about making sure how we get the communication out to our faculty colleagues at our retreat, which is in August. Another topic we discussed was, you know, some of these items are driven by our budget discussions. So we talked also about the hourly tutors and how we can make sure that we're within budget on that topic. And then the third thing I wanted to mention is something that we, that has been in the planning stages for a little while. We've talked about how can we address some of the campus climate issues that we have seen after the election. And so in the spring semester, we talked about various possibilities, symposium workshops, other things. And the Senate authorized a work group to work on that over the early summer and brought forward a proposal, which was approved at the Senate meeting yesterday. And so what we're planning is a two-part process. So one part will be geared toward the classroom, and the other part will be a workshop, one per month, in the months of September, October, and November in fall semester. So the in-class work will be supported by some lesson plans that we're going to share. There are a couple of faculty who've worked on some really amazing and interesting lesson plans that can be easily adapted to, adapted to a lot of different disciplines. And then the workshops, or symposium, rather, the once-per-month events are going to be held on Tuesday evening in the BSC Forum. And we are, we have high and lofty goals. So the first one for September is nothing less than truth. That is our goal. And the workshop title tentatively is 2016 Election: Won or Lost?, question mark. And then in October, our focus is on decency. And the topic of that colloquium is, why is the vagina a pre-existing condition? And then the third topic in November is focused on justice, and the question is, what is an American? And the third topic especially is something where we want to encourage students, in addition to thinking about important social issues that the country is facing, to see ways that they can become involved in whatever way they see. We certainly are not encouraging and don't plan to encourage any particular position on any of these topics, but we want students to be able to see the efficacy they can have in becoming involved in the community and seeing what groups that they might be interested in talking with and becoming a part of. So those are plans for fall, and of course, before each event, we'll be doing a campaign to make sure that everybody knows about it, students, faculty, board members, administrators.
Thank you, Priscilla. Questions?
I just wanted to compliment you, Dr. Butler, and the Academic Senate in moving in this direction. I think it's really timely, obviously, and very important, and it fits in directly with the vision statement that we worked on last year so hard. And I just think it's brave, and it's innovative, and I want to compliment you on that and the Academic Senate. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel, I don't even feel like I can say thank you, because the colleagues that I have worked with on this are just amazing. So Patricia Stark, Danielle Swantek, Matt, Kathy O'Connor, just amazing people. So I transfer that to them. Thank you.
Peter?
There's always the possibility that people will see this as a standard campus liberal response, which I think would be, we would do well to avoid if we can. Are you taking steps to think about that and to maybe work on it?
Absolutely, and that was one of the things we talked about in our planning session, because the last thing we want is for it to seem like forwarding some particular agenda. When we were talking about the framework for what our intention was, it was really examining the topic from a lot of different perspectives and inviting, so our workshop will have a panel of SBCC faculty who don't necessarily hold the same backgrounds, perspectives, or anything of similarity on the topic, but really to engage the audience in thinking. And a lot of, a lot of it will be back and forth with the audience as well. It's not just a lecture where, you know, people are sitting there and saying, mm-hmm. So we want everyone to know and feel that it is open, and that we really wanted to have a dialogue around these topics, but we want people to engage in that dialogue rather than shutting down or shutting off.
Well, I want to echo what our superintendent president said by way of compliments to the Academic Senate and to the committee that put this together. I think this is a very positive, proactive step in response to our times.
David?
Yeah, I just wanted to also thank you, especially after the posters around campus last semester. I think that's really important. Just a question about kind of like looking at both sides. Will there be a message sent at the very end of the conversation in terms of, I mean, it's truth, decency, and what it means to be American? So would it be like, you know, it's good to be truthful, and it's good to be decent? Or are we kind of looking at everything equally?
Well, the...
That makes sense.
The goal of truth is to find some truth. So one of the things that, truth sometimes implies that there is only one, and of course, some things can be seen from many perspectives, but there are certain things that are facts. And so we want to be able to distinguish between facts and opinions, and note that opinion shouldn't be used as facts and vice versa. So that's some, a critical part of the conversation as well. So yes, we are seeking actually truth and decency and justice. Yes.
It's a noble effort.
I'll come.
Yay, that would be great. We would love to see members of the board there and everybody. Let's talk. Thank you.
Okay, we do not have a report from associated students this time, but we will soon. And so Liz is next, or classified.
Good afternoon, members of the board. The consultation group actually met yesterday, first meeting of the summer. We usually meet after a CPC meeting, and we spent some of the time talking about replacements we needed for more. We already gotten two, so we took care of that. And we talked about some of the reorganizations that have taken place, and the ones that will be taking place, like in admissions, and the one that, with auxiliary services, and how that might impact classified staff. And then we also talked a little bit about the proposed, kind of proposed by the VP of HR, Mona, about the new employee orientation, and how both CSEA and the CCG may be involved in that, because that's something now that the unions are allowed to get involved in. I mean, it's kind of requirement, so. And I've talked to Mona about it, and she has some good ideas, so we look forward to that progressing. And that's about it. Thanks.
Questions, anyone? Thanks, Liz. Anthony, your report.
So I have a couple of things, and I wanted to spend a little bit of time on each of these. Of course, July 1 is the beginning of our fiscal year, and with that comes the beginning of new employees that have started here from outside, and also those that have been promoted from within. And obviously, that includes administrators, faculty, and classified staff. So over the next three board meetings, what we wanted to do for you is present to you each one of the new employees in those particular categories. And so this board meeting, I'm going to walk through the new administrators and managers. Next board meeting would be faculty, and then we'll have the classified staff probably sometime in September. We'll see. So I wanted to start off introducing someone that you already know, Ms. Lindsay Moss. And she's our new Vice President of Business Services, and of course, you know her well. But you may not have known that she has her MBA from CSU Channel Islands and her bachelor's degree from Antioch, but she's always liked everybody to know that she got her start in accounting, taking her first accounting class right here at Santa Barbara City College. And I know she's very proud of that. But she brings a wealth of experience. Of course, you know that she was the acting Vice President of Business Services, the college controller for, I guess, three, three and a half years. She also had her own business, and so she's got some private sector experience. And the thing that I really like about Lindsay is that she's also open and transparent. As you know, I mean, she, anything you want to know about the budget, she's always willing and able to jump in and tell you about it. And she believes strongly in participatory governance. So Lindsay Moss, new Vice President for Business Services. Second person is Dr. Melissa Moreno. She's the interim Vice President for the School of Extended Learning. And Melissa is also well-known to the college. You may not know that she completed her undergraduate studies at UCSB, and she has her Doctorate of Jurisprudence from the Santa Barbara College of Law. She's overseen both credit and non-credit programs in her time here, including, of course, running the Scheinfeld Center for Entrepreneurship and Innovation, which has won all kinds of awards, as you know. But also, she developed the Career Skills Institute and several other programs. Melissa has very graciously agreed to serve as the interim Vice President for the School of Extended Learning, and has already begun planning for that, and has done just an amazing job in putting together strategic thinking and direction for that. So I'm really excited about it. One of the big things that she did that you all might appreciate is that she's narrowed the application from, what was that? It was like six or seven pages for the non-credit program down to one page. So she's streamlined that miraculously, and so we're real proud of that. So, Dr. Moreno, thank you for being here and doing that. Mr. Rocco Constantino is our new Director of Athletics, and Rocco gets the award for relocating the furthest of any of the new SBCC employees. He hails from Belleville, New Jersey, and so he made the trek out here, and we're so pleased to have him. He holds a Master's Degree in Educational Leadership from Montclair State University, and a Bachelor's Degree in English, interestingly, from New Jersey City University. He has just a tremendous record of achievement and success with student athletes, and as a coach and athletic director. But I also found it very interesting that he is the author of the book Fifty Moments That Defined the Major League Baseball. And that was published in 2016, I think it was. So congratulations on that, Rocco. We're glad you're here. Arturo Rodriguez is the Dean of Student Services. I don't know, is Arturo here? I don't think he made it. But Arturo, we are so fortunate to have him. He holds a Master's of Art in Education from San Jose State, and a Bachelor's of Art in Architecture from Cal Poly, and then a single teaching credential, Veronica would appreciate this, in mathematics. After teaching math for several years, Arturo moved into administrative role, where he's served the majority of his time as Assistant Principal, and most recently with the Oxnard Unified School District, the Assistant Principal there. So he brings the K-12 component, working with students there. He's been a longtime resident of Santa Barbara, and so made that trek to Oxnard as a commute. So he is absolutely thrilled to be able to be employed with his dream job here at Santa Barbara City College, and we're thrilled to have him. Ms. Paloma Arnold is the new Director of EOPS. Here's Paloma up there. Paloma holds a Master's Degree in Psychology from Antioch University, and a Bachelor's of Art in History from UCLA. She's been employed in a variety of roles at Santa Barbara City College, and I'm sure that some of you are already familiar with her. She's been here for nearly 20 years, and she began as a Student Program Advisor in Financial Aid, but quickly transitioned to EOPS after a year. And I know that she's found her home in EOPS, and she has a great deal of passion for the EOPS program and those students. And she's spent the last 13 years there. She's received her MA, well, she moved into the role of Associate Professor of Academic Counseling at EOPS, Care and Financial Aid, and she's done just an outstanding job there. And so we're so pleased that she's now taken the responsibility of leadership for EOPS. So welcome. Dr. Jens Kuhn is the Dean of Science, Technology, Engineering, Math, and Language Studies. And Dr. Kuhn holds a PhD in Chemistry from UC Santa Barbara, a Master's in Chemistry from Northern Arizona University, and a Bachelor's in Chemistry from the University of Konz in Germany. Jens has been with Santa Barbara City College since the fall of 2008, serving as a faculty member, and also the Chair of the Chemistry Department. Most recently, he was a Project Director of the STEM Transfer Program. So he's really all about STEM, and speaks a couple of different languages, too, so the language piece is also an important component of all that. He's been incredibly successful in his roles, and I have every expectation that he's going to continue that success in his new role as the Dean. And then finally, in terms of the managers and administrators, we have Dr. Mona Lisa Hassan, who's the new Vice President for Human Resources. And Mona, if you'd come up, I'd like for you to say a few words, and while you're coming up, I'll introduce you. Dr. Hassan completed her Doctorate in Education, Educational Leadership from USC, and a Master's Degree in Educational Leadership from Pepperdine. She also has a Bachelor's of Science in Business Administration from the University of Phoenix. She's proud to have started her educational journey as a community college student, and she always likes to make sure that people realize that. She was a student at Mount SAC when she got started. But she brings 27 years of experience to Santa Barbara City College, and was most recently the Director of Human Services at Long Beach City College. So she understands the community college environment. But she also has a breadth of experience working in K-12. She was an Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources for a couple different K-12 school districts, including the Rio School District in Oxnard, which is a K-8 school district. But one of the things that you may have read when I sent out the notice about Mona Lisa is that she has extremely deep roots in Santa Barbara, being born here, and her father's family is one of the oldest families in the entire region, going back to the 1700s. And so it's kind of come all the way full circle in terms of being able to get Dr. Mona Lisa Hassan here. So we're thrilled to have you.
Well, thank you for having me. It's just a pleasure to be here, and I think I fulfilled my father's dream to return to Santa Barbara, even though he passed away at a very young age. But I feel his presence through this journey that I'm taking over here to serve this wonderful college and community. And I expect to be very involved in more than just Santa Barbara City College, but in the community, as I find opportunities, which I'm sure there will not be a shortage of. But community college, Mount SAC, I know it's not Santa Barbara City College, but the concept of community college, that's where I developed my career plan, my, not only my two-year plan, my five-year plan, but actually prepared a 20-year plan. And without that, I don't think I would have been able to accomplish the things that I did. So our faculty at the community college provide those opportunities to assist us in fulfilling our dreams. And I use that template that I received from that faculty member at Mount SAC to coach employees, not only students and young adults, but employees that are seeking their guide on how to accomplish their dreams as well. So I hope that I'm able to use some of the experiences that I've had at the K-12 level, and also at Long Beach City College, to come in and just work on building on the systems that we have in place here. So thank you for having me, and I look forward to working with all of you in some capacity. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The other, go ahead.
I was just going to say thank you, Mona Lisa, and welcome to everyone. It's wonderful to hear about you, and we're very happy to have you.
Anybody else want to comment?
Craig.
Well, to Mona, I'd like to say welcome home. Welcome back. I, my wife is also from one of the 1700s families that came here. And, yeah, so, you know, it's a place like a magnet, and you went away, but that, now you're going to, now we get the benefit of all of it. Thank you very much. And to this gentleman that came from furthest away. I haven't spent much time in New Jersey, but I would rather stay here, and that's why I am here. But welcome. And, you know, once I lived here when I was younger, and I moved away, and I didn't really appreciate it, until I moved to a place called Bakersfield for a while. And when I came back, I've had multiple opportunities to move back to towns, cities like Bakersfield, and I'm just staying here. I think you'll fall in love, and so welcome.
Thank you. Yes, I'm happy to be located.
So I'm just absolutely thrilled with these administrators and managers. And you'll note that in more than one case, we have tapped into the K-12 administrative experience and experience as teachers and such there, and I think that is a nice compliment to what it is that we're trying to do at the college. So the second thing I wanted to report out on, and I won't steal the thunder, I asked Luce to come down and speak to this. As she's coming down, I'll just tell you that Angie did a little bit of research, and we started looking back to find out the last time that a report to the community had been done by just the college. I mean, we've done things with the foundation, but solely with the college. And I think we went back to Peter McDougall's time. We think maybe John Romo made, maybe...
Sent one out.
Sent one out, but it was more related to the foundation and such. But we're absolutely thrilled to be able to give this report to the community now. And I want to compliment Luce Reyes Martin and her staff, who's just done a phenomenal job of pulling together so much information into something that is enjoyable to read, to look at, and found of good information for the community. So thank you, Luce.
Thank you, and I'll keep my comments brief, but good afternoon, and I'm thrilled to be here to present you the Santa Barbara City College 2016-2017 Report to the Community, where it's literally hot off the presses, out of the box. This report highlights the academic year, and truly showcases our academic excellence, faculty excellence, student life, community events, and major college initiatives. The creation of this report was a true team effort, led by the Office of Communications. We worked with many departments throughout the college to prepare the content. And a big thank you to everyone who worked with us to obtain information and photographs. The SBCC Foundation was a great partner, and they're featured prominently and highlight the SBCC promise. Everyone in my office had a hand in putting this together, and I want to compliment Amanda Jacobs and Kirsten Matheson in my office, who helped coordinate the content and the photography, and the design by Melanie Belanger, and letting her be creative and come up with a design that, as Dr. Beebe said, is enjoyable, easy to read, and highlights everything we wanted to touch on. The digital version of the report will be posted to our website and social media channels tomorrow morning. It's ready to go. You've just got to hit the button. And there will be a press release, and it will be distributed via email as well. We plan to send out by mail a small batch that we printed, hard copies, and we'll also have hard copies available in the President's Office and other locations around main campus and at the shot and wake campuses. We're very proud of the result, and we know that this is really just the beginning of a tradition that we want to keep going. Every year, we already have ideas about how to build on this and make it stronger. And really, it's just with the goal in mind to share the many reasons we're proud to be Santa Barbara's community college. So thank you for your support.
That's the end of my report.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you, Luce. This is, this looks like a great report. We have tried to avoid reading it while you were talking. But I can tell it's really a wonderful effort, so thank you. This takes us to the Board Member Reports, and it's probably going to be a little shorter than usual. But we have a few people here. Legislative Liaison.
Report is shorter than usual, but very productive. Anthony and I got to meet today. So, we're not last minute, I promise. But, so, this is the concept we agreed upon on how to, like, how to continue moving forward with the Legislative Liaison and Legislative Agenda, kind of now say Legislative Priorities Policy. So, the idea is, once a year, maybe later in the year, like a few months from now, we would develop our legislative priorities, whatever those are. So, I don't even want to presuppose any of them, but whatever we feel are related issues to the college that we have general stances or, you know, ideas on, so financial aid, immigrant students, funding formulas, whatever we feel are important issues, we can look at other ones. So, we develop something like that. It's similar to the Board Goals, where it's more general things that then let Anthony and Legislative Liaison and Board President in whatever is happening. Like, we had something come up recently where Anthony emailed Marsha, and I said, you know, this is a bill that's going forward. What do you think? So, this would be like, there would be standing principles that we would have voted on. So, we don't always have to vote on every single bill. But if Anthony's in a meeting with an elected official, and whatever they're talking about lines up with our priorities, then he has, like, reign to mention it, and it's like board, you know, board-supported. But then, if there's a specific bill that we're discussing, and that we want, like, a formal support from the Board, then that would come to the Board later in the year. So, we would set our priorities at the end of the year. It would inform whatever happens, it gives you a baseline. And then, if a bill comes up, like last meeting, that is requested of us to support, we would then take a stance on it, and then we'd, of course, like, state the Community College League stance. But potentially, I mean, I'd say one in a hundred chance that we might have a disagreement, but I think it's just, you know, it's information. The CCLC supports, they oppose, or they have no stance. One they might not have any stance on that we'd want to take stance on is, I mentioned this to Anthony, is the bill that was in the Assembly last year that gave us the armory in Santa Barbara, like, that helped make the transfer happen. That could have been something, if it was needed, we could have said, oh, we support this, too, because, you know, it would help our community. So, that's the kind of general concept. So, I'll touch up the document that we saw last time, and then that'll hopefully be on the next agenda, one of the ones in August. So, we figured it out, though. So, we did what you all asked us to do. And then, the other thing is semi-related, is I got contacted by someone from the Lieutenant Governor's Office, and who's also working with the Secretary of State's Office and a couple of other organizations from the state government to make voter registration efforts better on college campuses in California. So, they got an MOU signed with the UC and CSU already, and they got the Board of Governors to pass a resolution of support of everything they're trying to do, with the intention that they then go to every district and work out the deal on the district level compared to, like, the CSU and UC doing it centrally. So, they reached out to me, and I forwarded the information to Anthony. So, hopefully, we can have something soon. It's really interesting of, you know, they're willing to have support from the state to help us do things here that promote voter activity, where our students vote. And then, our event at Hope Ranch, I think, is after our first Board Meeting next month. That's moving forward very well. Luce and I met today about it. But it's looking, it's August 14th at 7:00 PM, and that's, we're moving forward. We've got a lot of contacts now for people we can email to invite to it. So, yes, 7:00 PM on August 14th. So, it's going forward good, and then we're going to, we're still planning on the next one being Latino families in Isla Vista, like, maybe at Ivy School, and having something with them there. So, that's my report.
Okay. K-12, anything, Mary Ann, from that perspective? I know you've been gone as well.
Yeah, yeah. And, of course, so is Veronica.
Yes.
We have talked a little bit about doing more work in Goleta, because that is not a direct connection that has been worked on. Similar to what you're talking about with Isla Vista, has not been done with Goleta. And so, that's the part that Veronica and I have been talking about.
Interesting. It's true.
It strikes me that it might make sense to give you and Veronica and Anthony a chance to parallel job descriptions, so that we're looking at something similar ultimately when they come forward.
Yeah, I think that's a very good idea.
Okay. Foundation, anything from that end? Mary Ann, did you sub for Veronica or anything on the Foundation?
No.
Okay. Then that takes us to Mitigation Ad Hoc Committee. We have not yet met, but Anthony has been having a good time, we hope, on vacation. And so, now that he's back, we'll set something up. Not to blame you or anything.
Oh, okay.
It's a good thing that you went on vacation. It's always a good thing to take a vacation. Community Partnership, ad hoc?
No, we've not done that.
Okay. All right, so that brings us to the development of the Consent Agenda. And in this case, the eligible items would be 7.1 through 9.7. But Anthony and I have talked about pulling out 9.4. We agree that needs some discussion. So, the question, first question is, are any of these other items, 7.1 through 9.7, does anyone want to pull anything else? Peter.
9.5.
9.5, okay.
I just want additional discussion and a clearer understanding of DAS responsible.
DSA?
DSA, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Hearing nothing. So, then we need a motion to approve 7.1 through 9.7, except for 9.4 and 9.5.
So, move.
Marty moves. Peter seconds. Any questions or comments on that group? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. So, let's go to 9.4.
Okay, 9.4 and 9.5 are both under Business Services, so I'll ask our Vice President for Business Services, Lindsay Moss, to come up and talk about this. And as she's walking up, I'll just say a couple of opening remarks in terms of the five-year construction plan. You know, we are at an important juncture right now with our facilities and construction plans. We're really taking a 360-degree strategic view and look at the needs of the college and the strategic direction of the college. I mean, as you know very well, we are not in a growth mode. We are looking at things much differently in terms of where we're heading with Enrollment Management. We've settled on a stable optimal size of the college at about 17,000 students headcount, 15,000 full-time equivalent student number. And we're going to manage to that. And that's a different strategic view than we've had in the past, where we're wanting to grow, we're thinking about growth. And when you think about growth and enrollment, you need to think about facilities and what you might have to have to accommodate that growth. And so, now with a different strategic direction and thought of all of that, we're in a process of, one, developing Facilities Master Plan, and Vice President Moss has been leading that effort. But much work to do with that. That's a very arduous undertaking and one that needs a lot of input from the entire college. So, we're working on that. And the Facilities Master Plan, obviously, will incorporate into that and have, as a result of that, the construction plan. And so, we're at a point at the college where we're re-looking and reevaluating the needs of the college. And, yeah, these, the construction plan, the five-year construction plan that we have is really some projects that were put in place a while ago. And so, we're kind of taking care of some of those elements right now. So, I'll turn this over to you, Lindsay.
That was a great summary, Dr. Beebe. So, the five-year construction plan is something that's required by the Chancellor's Office for us to complete every year. There's quite a process that goes with it. If you submit an item that you want to go through, a new building or a remodel, there's many steps you need to go through, and it takes multiple years before it gets to a stage where it could potentially be funded. So, last year, our plan had about eight projects on it. And one of those projects, as we know, we are no longer going forward with, which is Campus Center. And then, some of the others, as we've begun looking at our Facility Master Plan and our strategic planning overall, we've decided that we're not interested in submitting those to the Chancellor's Office again this year for this plan. So, the five-year construction plan, the one pager that just has the two items, it only has two projects listed, the Physical Education Replacement Project, and it continues to list the Campus Center Plan, because that is still in the queue of the Department of Finance at the state level, and we're unable to remove it from this report until they've removed it on their end, because there were some reimbursement claims against that project in 1617. So, you'll see there's no funding to the far right for that plan. It will fall off at the end of this fiscal year now. So, the Physical Education Reimbursement Project is the only active plan or project we are looking to have in the five-year construction plan right now. That's a $30 million project that would be funded by the state. You can see the non-state or the local portion that the district would need to fund is very small, $170,000. So, that's some good news to us in our financial situation that we're in right now. Almost all of the funding would be coming from the state. There's an additional attachment tonight that's called the FPP, or the Final Project Proposal, that describes this project in more detail. And then, you'll also see the entire five-year construction plan is a very long document with a lot of information. I don't know if you have any specific questions beyond that?
I was going to make some kind of context things, too. Okay. As Anthony and I talked about this Agenda item, and we talked with Lindsay as well to get more background, it was apparent to me that I, at least, know very little about the Chancellor's Office process, what we were committing to in terms of priorities, how that relates to what our strategic thinking is now as we develop the Facility Master Plan under a "times have changed" kind of viewpoint. And that we really needed to both learn more about this as a Board, in the same way that we learned about the budget. I think we all know an awful lot more about the budget than we used to, now that we deal with it as a Board as a whole. And similarly, I think we need to learn about this facilities process. So, we talked in terms of putting it on our Retreat Agenda, and we're looking at a longer session where we will learn and discuss priorities and so forth, and how these things all interact. Because I know, for example, that Campus Center is still important in our minds, and we need to figure out how the projects relate, how they impact our strategic planning. All of those things need to make, I think, a more comprehensive picture for us. And so, we're looking to a Retreat time period to do that, and we're looking, as you know, for a Retreat date. We're thinking, actually, in terms of two Retreats, but shorter, like 9:00 AM to 2:00 on two different dates, one in August, one in September, something like that. And that would allow us to, as a Board, learn about these topics and kind of see the big picture better, and perhaps move towards some general Board policies that would express principles as we think about these issues. So, it's very much like the budget discussions we had last year, and I think it will be interesting. And hopefully, we will all gain a lot firmer understanding of how we want to handle these issues with, of course, college-wide input. But we, at the Board level, I think, need to understand this better. So, that's my big-picture pitch. And what's in front of us now, in some senses, is a placeholder, because, as Lindsay explained it, the, this particular project had moved through the Chancellor's Office channels to a certain degree. It's true that it now says that we would only pay a small portion, but that doesn't count the equipment and facilities and furniture. It doesn't count the possibility of a cost overrun on the bid, like we had with Campus Center, and those sorts of issues. So, it's complicated as well in and of itself. We felt like we should keep the placeholder, but Chancellor's Office Guidance also talks about updating them in February. So, that seemed like a good milestone to aim for, where we might have a more big-picture view of how we want to proceed with these and what our priorities are. And we could stay in touch with the Chancellor's Office and try to come along together on that issue, so that they understand what we're doing and are not surprised down the road, and we are not surprised either by what happens on their end.
Can I add one more thing that I probably should have added? Just to clarify, that the funding for this project would come in 1920, the year 1920. So, just to keep that in mind, this is not something we'd be receiving funding for right away in this year. And this is not a commitment on our side to do the project. It's just keeping us in the pipeline, like you mentioned.
Craig.
Yeah, I thought a lot about this, and some of my concerns were already addressed. Thank you, Marsha. But way back before we went for Major S, we had this big list that got out there in the public that wasn't even real, but anyway. And the gym was on there then, and the Student Center, and all good reasons for wanting to improve the college, not generate more space, but to get rid of the portable buildings and have more usable space. And one of the biggest concerns that I still have, that I haven't had answered yet, and I don't expect Lindsay to answer this, really, because we don't have an architect in the Roman, and we do have a person on staff that does these things, or knows more, is the structural inefficiency of some of the buildings. Like, they don't meet the current earthquake codes, for example, which is the main issue. And I still don't know how far off from where we need to be, like, what has to happen? I mean, how unstructurally safe are these buildings, if they are really at all? And if there's a very, very small percentage gap, that's a lot of money to spend. Granted, you know, it's public safety, but still, we need to be more aware of those details. And then, finally, to conclude my remarks on this subject, and I'm all over the place, I apologize, but these are the things that come up. The main reason, one of the main reasons for redoing that Campus Center, instead of remodeling it, is because we had very inadequate and inefficient space for some of the equipment that runs the building, and there was classroom space for food services, education, and the conditions of the classrooms, you know, we said, we need to do something a lot better. And in reading about, in reading what was given to us to refer to now for this meeting, there was talk about classroom space, and we couldn't build a building bigger than we needed, and had to define what needed for classroom space and what we needed for other space. And we had to stay within the same square footage. And that's fine, but, you know, if we can't do the classroom, if we can't do that Student Center, we still have that really glaring need to fix that classroom space. We have a premier- We have a premier program, you know, for, in the food services area. And, you know, it seems like our facilities aren't quite where they should be. And, so, keeping in mind with our new master plan, how do we fit that in and where are we going? And, that's what I'm interested in, is how does that, how is that gonna jive together? And, how is this, it's not important now, and, so I don't want an answer to this either at this point, but I want to bring it up. How do we, how do we justify doing this to make it better? You know, I, I, how does this fit into our educational master plan? Is that, how, what's the priority? Do we need that gym seismically upgraded at the expense of not providing classroom space that we need for other programs? I'm not convinced that this is where we should go. I'm not saying that we shouldn't go there or pursue it, but I'm not convinced about it at all. I need more information. I can't function like this and make an intelligent decision. I don't know where to go, read what. There's too much stuff out there. I need some guidance.
Well, you're asking all the right questions, and those are the, those are exactly the questions that, that we're wrestling with too, in terms of trying to find the answers to those in putting together the Facilities Master Plan and the five-year construction plan. To answer any one of those questions would be a two- or three-hour conversation. So, I mean, that's why, what Marcia's talking about, why we need to have a couple different retreats set aside, to be able to get into this in some detail so that we do fully understand what's going on. We've, we've got a plan for the Campus Center, for example, to be able to spend some, some of the swing space money that we had put aside, to be able to replace some of the equipment that you're referring to for the Culinary Arts Program, also upgrading some of the equipment, getting the two classrooms down on the bottom floor back into operations and so on and so forth. But, as I say, these are conversations that are really frankly more operational, you know, with some of this. But, they could help inform a higher-level policy, level discussion from the board.
I'm just, I'm just concerned that, that, that we're, I want, if, if this, this is out there now, this, the community has, can see what we're looking at doing and what's happening, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of other issues and alternatives here.
Right.
And I want to make sure that all voices and sections, all concerns are listened to, and it's not just, you know, one group that's saying, "I want this."
Right.
And they're doing all the right things, and I'm very happy about that. I just want to be informed.
Thank you for all that, Craig. That means a lot.
Mary Ann.
Along with that discussion of facilities, I want to bring up how delighted I am by the efforts that the college leadership is making in connecting the facilities and the wonderful material and property that we have with access to the community. The Fourth of July was absolutely delightful, and there were a lot of people who took advantage of that invitation, and who enjoyed the fireworks on our campus. And, our community obviously cares about this campus because all of those people did not make a terrible mess or anything like that. It was just a very lovely community event. And, I know that you're doing some more that way with the symphony concert and so forth. And, I just think that it's, it's really wonderful to share this wonderful facility and campus with the community. It's theirs.
David?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I agree with Craig. I'm a little bit confused in terms of the PE building and the classrooms, and, I mean, I'm also new. But, my question was, are we going to be voting on this today, or is this going to?
We do need to vote on it in order to forward something, a five-year construction plan basically, to the Chancellor's Office. That is due. We had an extension of a couple weeks, and we're up against that. But, the thought was, and, as I was saying, to get a better handle on this between now and February, and kind of try to reassess what we know about all our buildings, what we know about their uses, what we know about our priorities and our strategic plans, and really understand the Chancellor's Office process. So, those two, so those come together. I mean, we want to maximize state funds. I don't think anyone disagrees with that. But, at the same time, we don't want to be boxed into spending money on something that isn't a priority, or is a lesser priority, I guess I would say. Everything's a priority, but it's not a lower priority just because it's state money. You have to think about all the pros and cons, and that's where we're trying to get in a more organized way.
So, if I understand you correctly, the, the impact of our vote today is to establish a placeholder. It is not an affirmation that we should move forward with the construction of a new physical education building.
Correct.
Right.
Yes. It's a placeholder. It was already put in that place last year. And I think our-
Right, so then we're reaffirming the placeholder. But, I recall during the initial discussions about that building, I for one, and I don't think I was alone, had some reservations about it. By contrast, with our discussions about the replacement of the Campus Center, which were extensive, I think the, the discussions about the physical education building were not as extensive. And I, I go along with everything that's been said that suggests that that's the sort of conversation that's necessary in order to show that that really is a priority, as, and perhaps it's a priority over other things, but it, that it actually needs to be done. That's, that's a concern. I think it's a shared concern, and, but only on that basis would I agree to vote for it.
I think you're correctly describing it. We are not committing ourselves. Lindsay?
Right, that's correct. So, we haven't even gotten to the stage where we go out and get bids, or have a drawing, an architectural drawing, or anything like that. We're just keeping ourselves in the queue for this project to receive the funding from the state. If we pulled out and we didn't put this on the plan right now, we would lose the opportunity to even have the funds in 1920. So, we're not committing. It's very similar to Campus Center. We'd go through the same process, and if the bid came, we could reject the bid, just like we did with Campus Center.
But, I think we would all prefer not to be that, in that situation. We're trying to get ahead of that curve and make sure that we are putting forth the plan we want.
If that's the case, I would call for the question.
Okay. Craig asked beforehand for one comment. You're okay?
I'll wait till he's done. I'm sorry.
Well, he's, he's asking for a vote.
No, I, I have a question. A related concern.
Peter, I know you can do this, but can we give him his?
Right. I mean, to call for the question is simply one member's indication that we, that he feels we've had enough discussion. To move the previous question means we'd have to have a second, and that would require a vote.
Okay. Craig?
I kind of, I wanted to wait and not, not say this, not bring this up until after we had your suggested meeting, so we could discuss this a little bit more. But, if we, I don't really recall anything formal, like applying for that, the gym building last year. I know we discussed it briefly, but I, I'm sorry, I just don't remember it being on a list that we were working on. And then, when I saw it, and when I, when I saw the actual, you know, drawings of how it would, where it would go, and there's been a lot of work done on this that somebody paid for, us, I assume. And how many years ago? I don't know. And, I, on the positive side, I just love the perspective view of it and what it does for the community. It's gonna look better than what's there. It would be absolute, it fits the site really well, and it would be an asset to the city and the community, and it would meet our needs at the same time. And so, I think it would look absolutely wonderful. However, the evaluation of it to our needs is, is something that we have not done, how well it really fits, and...
I don't think anybody's disagreeing with you.
Yeah, I think, I think-
But, if we, if we vote, if we say yes on this, and then we said yes on the Campus Center, and then we said no on the Campus Center, I mean, is the state, look at us and go, "These people don't know what they want"?
Well, that's why, that's why we're staying in touch with them. I mean, we said no to the Campus Center because we felt we could not afford it. We are not through the woods on our budget.
Yeah.
We are, we are still coming to terms with our need to balance the operational budget. So, to jump in and say, "Oh, yes, we can have another project," would perhaps be premature. We have to bring all of that together to a comprehensive understanding, and that's where we're trying to get. So, we're looking at February to update the Chancellor's Office. We're looking at this as a placeholder in the meantime, and...
And also a timeframe for us between now and February to, to be able to educate ourselves in terms of need, in terms of priority, in terms of the Facilities Master Plan. It'll be done by then, and we'll be able to go through all of that. And that's, that's the call for the, the two retreats that, that we're, we're planning.
Yeah, I couldn't vote for this unless I knew it was pretty close to being consistent with the master plan, which I don't have in front of me.
We don't have?
Yeah, we don't have, yeah.
It's in process.
So, I can't compare that, and I think that's critical. And, I was gonna vote no on this based upon Dr. Hausland's comments. I think I'll go ahead and say yes.
Okay. David, and then we'll, then we'll have our vote.
Yeah, just, just for my information, the last paragraph under PE building replacement, it says, "The project was canceled, but it's listed for reimbursement, and it'll be removed from the report next year."
That's the Campus Center.
That's the Campus Center.
Yeah.
You're referring to the Campus Center.
The Campus Center project is the one that's being removed.
Oh, I see. That's under PE. I found it there, but, unless I'm misreading it.
I don't have it.
Which page are you on?
It says the following project, the one afterwards.
Oh, got you. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Now, I don't want to leave Jonathan and Marty if you had any comments. I didn't want to pass over that. Okay.
I, I understand.
Okay. So, can I have a motion to approve the five-year construction plan as currently configured with the understanding that we're not committing to any specific project at this point?
Move.
I, second.
Peter moves. Mary Ann seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. That takes us to 9.5. And, Peter, you had a question on that. Do you want to go for it?
Well, the question, simply put, is that it appears as if DSA had overlooked something in the process of making its evaluation about this particular project. Then, they came back and said, "Whoops, we made a mistake. The, the way one clads stone to buildings is a little more complicated, and is a function perhaps of the weight of the material being applied." Do they incur any responsibility for, and here, I'm thinking specifically, a financial responsibility for making a screw-up?
Well, it's slightly more complex than that. In the architect's write-up of what the stone veneer would be, they said it would be a thin veneer. And, normally, when you think of a thin veneer, you think of a thin veneer. So, when DSA reviewed it, they didn't understand it was a piece of stone that's quite thick. So, there's more than one party that contributed to the confusion and to this situation. So, I understand your question, but it, it's very hard to say exactly who was at fault and what happened and why, but months and months of work went into this particular item, and actually, we're quite relieved that the cost is not as high as we were expecting it to be, to have to take down the stone and re-set up how they'd be stuck to the building so that they'd be more secure. We had to take down the stone that was above four feet high and put it back up, and it's quite a project. So, it wasn't actually too bad that it cost $45,000 more than we had expected, and we're still well within the contingency, which is good news.
You know, and one thing I want to add here to this is, is that we're looking at a change order that is 1.49% of the contract. And, quite frankly, you know, many colleges, some that I've worked in in the past, wouldn't even look at a, a change order that's, that's less than 10% of the cost of the contract. So, we're talking about a relatively minor change in this at 40, $45,671. And, you know, the other thing is, is that we have a contingency of, of over $230,000 to cover things that are just like this. And so, we'll still end up with, you know, $229,000 plus dollars in that contingency fund. So, that's more than enough to cover anything that we're gonna have going forward with a project that's 75% complete. So, we're, we're in really good shape. I mean, just trying to keep this, you know, as, as a big picture of where we are.
I, I understand the, your efforts to put this in perspective.
Yeah, exactly.
I agree with it. And, you notice when I began my remarks, I didn't say anything about the money. It's not about money. It's about responsibility. And, I, I just am curious to know, in, for the future, how, how do we allocate responsibility when mistakes are made by others? These mistakes requiring us to make a decision, and, and we incur the cost, no matter how, what the cost is. It's a matter of principle.
I would hazard a guess that the chances of getting money from DSA are close to zero. From the architect, might be a little higher than that if one were to ask them to chip in.
Maybe not. But, I had to ask anyway.
Yeah, that's good.
So, having said that, I'll vote for it.
Thank you, Dr. Hausland.
You were just agreeing.
I'm, I'm gonna vote for it because I just want this project to go on, and I don't want to hold it up. Probably, I might be in a minority, but I've built things before and acted as a general contractor. And, when I do a project, and I get bids, and I do things, and then something doesn't go right, when it doesn't go right, I pay. Or, if it's a sub that didn't do his work right, then I don't use that guy again unless he had a really good reason. You know, I know, but we, the way, the way the bidding is structured, we allow that contingency fund. It's publicly, it's public information. When I'm a private contractor and I do something and I own the whole project, I own the land, I'm building the building, I'm doing everything myself, I don't have to disclose hardly anything. But, so if anything goes wrong, it's on me. But, here, we have a contingency fund. It's built in. The money's there, and it's, what I've observed is the way the system works. However, that doesn't, I still like what Dr. Hausland raised. I think it's right on point. You know, somebody makes a mistake, you gotta own up to it and do what you can and make it right. You know, even if it hurts a little bit. And I don't see that going on at all. And I've seen these projects go through with these minor little things hitting us with it. And that protects their profit margins, and everything's good. You know, I think more due diligence before they get into it, and to miss something like this, when that's the business they're in, that kind of stuff, they shouldn't be missing. I mean, what kind of material you're putting on, whether it weighs a little bit or weighs a lot, is a big factor. Any engineer or architect that looks at those plans should know that. They should, it should have stuck out like a sore thumb. I, I just don't comprehend how they missed it. But, be that as it may, and the only reason I'm commenting is because it's on our agenda and it's in front of us. So, with that being said, I don't think at this point, it's after the fact, and, you know, we weren't asked before.
Okay. Motion to approve 9.5, change order. Jonathan? Peter second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Craig? Okay. We are all the way to the resolutions. And we have a resolution 10.1 on augmentation of revenue. A motion to approve, we all like augmenting our revenue. You want to make the motion?
Yes. And then I have a comment before we vote, not about any particular one.
That's fine. And, second? Jonathan? Okay. You have a comment? Craig?
Oh, it went that fast. Sorry, I was reading. Been talking too much tonight.
Now, remember- Now, remember, this is a motion on augmentation of the revenue, so...
Oh, it's, I thought it was, I thought we were doing all, we couldn't take all these together.
No, we're just doing that one at the moment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So no comment?
No comment.
You can't be against augmenting the revenue.
No, I'm not. I'm not against any of these coming up here, so I...
Okay. Angie?
Motion, okay.
Trustee Croninger?
Aye.
Trustee Bloom?
Aye.
Trustee Kugler?
Aye.
Trustee Abud?
Aye.
Trustee Nielsen?
Aye.
Trustee Hasland?
Aye.
Student trustee Pam Betti?
Aye.
Okay, that's it. Now we're on resolution 35, budget transfer between major objects, motion to approve. Peter, second. Mary Ann? Comments specific to that? Anybody? Okay. Angie?
Trustee Croninger?
Aye.
Trustee Bloom?
Aye.
Trustee Kugler?
Aye.
Trustee Abud?
Aye.
Trustee Nielsen?
Aye.
Trustee Hasland?
Aye.
Student trustee Pam Betti?
Aye.
Changed the order.
Yeah, I do.
She's, she does that, she's sneaking.
You're not always first.
I've never been first yet.
Well, there's, Dean had done, Dean Evans had done an algorithm to mix it up every time, so no one would get stuck with being first every time, but now I think Angie just does it, right?
Yeah, I just do my flow. It's cool.
Okay, that takes us to 11.1, which is timeframe for development of policies and procedures. Earlier, we had a policy concept before us with some draft language about how we would develop new policies or make major amendments to existing policies. And the gist of that was to discuss it with Anthony and the board president, and if it's a go, then we draft up some language, the board discusses yay, nay, if it's a go, then it goes to BPAP for their comments, and comes back to the board for first reading, second reading. And we realized that we've had a number of policies kind of in the works for quite a while. So Anthony and I thought we should put on this agenda the idea of putting in some expected timeframes for turnaround. And the point of this discussion is kind of to get the board's input, is that a good idea, and what might those timeframes be? So I see a step between the initial discussion of an idea with Anthony, board president, and it gets to the board for discussion in a draft, that would be one timeframe. And just to give you something to chew on, I was thinking 60 days, maybe? Then the board discusses the draft, and it goes to BPAP if the board says yes, we should proceed with this idea. And there, we need a timeframe for BPAP to give their comments. And finally, assuming the board adopts it after two readings, usually there's an administrative procedure to which we turn to Anthony to cause that to happen, and it might be good to have a timeframe for that as well, an expectation at least that there would be an AP in place by, in so many days. So that's the context, what do you think? Peter?
I think the concept is good. Allow for exceptions. I think have, in the, in the event that something just takes longer time, just, this should be a set of expectations-
Keyword.
-for, for which there may be exceptions.
Jonathan?
I agree with that. My edit would be, since they are expectations, lower the timeframe, so like 45 days each or something like that, like a 90-day total, and then if it needs to run over 45-
Well, there's three of them, so 45 wouldn't be-
Forty-five, oh, it was 60, 60, and 60?
No, I didn't, I just said 60 for the first one, then I went, I didn't do any for the other two.
Oh, I, I guess I heard 60. Yes, I guess, I would figure out like, maybe like a total timeframe, too, like from start to finish, and then have that be-
But I think there should be a, an in-between.
Internal, oh, yeah, yeah, 100 percent. So that's why I would say 45.
You were going to say 45 each.
Yeah, and then with Peter's recommendation that if it takes 60, that's not a big deal.
Right.
But it shouldn't take 60 every time, yeah, it shouldn't take 60 every time if-
I think, I think we should acknowledge the Peter principle here. I mean, not having any reference to me, but work, work really does tend to expand so as to fill the time allotted for its completion. It's no different for us than for anybody else.
But when time, no time is allotted, it's going to expand infinitely, and that's what we're getting at, I think.
I like the idea.
Anyone else? Anyone against the idea?
I think this really strengthens the-
Okay.
...idea.
Well, we'll put that into the mix, then.
Will you, will you come back to us with specific dates and, or-
Well, I'm hearing no other suggestions, I guess I'm going to go with Jonathan's 45, but we have an exception, I mean, it's kind of an overall expectation.
Sure. Understanding.
Craig?
Yeah. What, why did, why do you see this need? Have there, have you seen, have you been witnessing instances that never got past a certain point or didn't get started?
Yeah, actually.
My, I've witnessed a couple instances where things never got started, you know, never went past, you know, probably anybody.
Well, that, that may happen in this process, I mean, there may be some idea that has floated and, and, you know, either Anthony says, you know, really, that's not going to be very helpful, and everyone decides, oh, you know, you're right on thinking that one over, whatever.
You know, I-
But it's also possible that, it's possible for these to sort of languish, and I think the next one Jonathan proposed quite a while ago, the one we have in, under 11.2, and we, it takes us, took us too long to get it back in front of us, and there are others that have been out there for a while, too. The ones that we talked about at our retreat on fiscal matters need to come back, but they weren't quite ready, so. David?
Go ahead. No, I, just clarification, these are, there, there's no rule implied in this that we can't do it more quickly than 45 days. Okay?
No. And, and I think you're suggesting, and what I'm hearing is, there's also not a hard and fast, you know, I mean, it still has to go through-
The key word I heard was expect, was expectations, and I would expect that, that word-
Right.
-or a similar phraseology to be incorporated in-
Yeah.
-the phraseology, that's all.
David?
Can I suggest possibly doing 30 days? Just because if it's 30 each category, then that would be 90, which is a quarter of the year. I mean, again, it is still an expectation, it's not really a, you have to do it, but I think if we kind of set the bar high, then, you know, we're kind of shooting for the stars kind of thing.
David, you're, you're, where did you get your bachelor's degree, and why are you here?
I, I'm looking for a compromise where we don't fail too often, but, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I said, that's why I was thinking 45, it's like 30, I could see, like, just in the speed of things, might just, it'd get like passed every time, like, it'll be like 35, 40 every time. That's the only reason I said 45, is like, the timeline of the month in a college, but...
I, I think one possible answer to that is that 30 days in all cases would probably be sufficient, except we're doing other things as well, and, and the, the agenda gets really busy, and, and not for reasons of a lack of clarity, but for lack of space on the agenda, we just, so I, I would support the 45 days. I think, you know, with, with the proviso that if we can do it faster, why not do so?
You know, these are, we wrestle with some pretty difficult topics, and some of these can go through fairly rapidly, but others take, take time, particularly on the college side, to be able to have them fully vetted and be able to have our participatory governance groups be able to really kind of get into it and, and have a good discussion about it. So, you know, I, I like, I think the idea of 45 days, I mean, I hear what you're saying, David, from a practical perspective, but, but I think 45 days is probably more realistic for us as a, as an expectation.
Do we have to vote?
No, this was discussion only. Okay, 11.2 is a revision to board policies, which I just mentioned, it's attached to the agenda, and it has been reviewed by BPAP, and it's being presented for first reading. And the language, which I think you've probably all read, yes, basically that we will do an equal employment opportunity plan each year in accordance with ED Code and Title V, and then that report will include demographics of college staff and faculty and new hires from previous full year. Does, why don't we have a motion to approve it, and then we can have comments and discussions?
Oh, this is a first reading?
Oh, it's first reading, sorry.
We, can we bump that up, because this is not a complicated issue, unless, unless not everybody's ready.
Well, we've noticed, we've noticed it for first reading, so no, we can't. And that is the normal process, you're right. So, any comments on the first reading? Anybody?
I'll just say that it's fairly similar to what I submitted, I think BPAP did good to add that first sentence, and then the second sentence, basically what I submitted, but I'm excited for this.
I'm in agreement, mine. I agree.
Okay. All right, we're happy with that. Now, our next item is adjourning to closed session, but let me reiterate before we go there, since people, for the most part, like to go home now. We are, we are looking for two shorter retreats in August and September, nine to two-ish is what we were tentatively thinking, I hope that works for you, Peter, and hopefully the same place, and as last, last retreat. And then we're also looking to schedule a special meeting, probably July 27th, because we need to finish up Anthony's evaluation, but that will not have a public component, that will be closed session, basically, with public comment as usual beforehand.
I didn't hear that date, it went right in my ear. About, for Anthony's, uh-
July 27th.
The 27th, okay.
Yeah.
That's at four still?
Yeah, it would be when we have our normal board meeting, if we were having a board meeting. It seemed like the simplest date to pick.
Yeah.
So. And so, with that, we're adjourning to closed session, we'll be back, but I don't expect an audience. Thank you. Good night.
Oh, is there closed session today?